Okay. We will start in alphabetical order. The incumbents will go last. This forum is now being recorded and will be available. Captions are available on the bottom of your screen. Susan Gilmore is our timer and Ellen Kobernick is our tech guru. Now, I would like to introduce our panelists in alphabetical order. So you can unspotlight me. Alan. One sec. Well, below me is Rebecca Brodsky. Okay. Then we have Jaime Garcia. Okay, we spotlighted everyone. Jaime, will you wave so the audience sees you? Thank you. Juanita Kerber. Summer Khan. Rich Lester. Jennifer Rivera. Up in the corner there, Carrie Sautner. And Anna Shorrock. Okay. So the questions will start now. We will start with Rebecca Brodsky. And include this question in your opening statement. You'll have 90 seconds. If elected to school board, what subcommittee do you want to join and what qualifications do you have that make that subcommittee a good fit? Your 90 seconds starts now.
Good evening Democratic Committee members and committee members of Lower Marion Narberth. My name is Rebecca Brodsky and my family resides in Armour for just about three years now. My daughter is a third grader at Penn Valley Elementary School. During the first school year, I decided to become a homeroom ambassador for my daughter's class. Currently, I am serving my second year as co vice president of Penn Valley Homeschool Association Board. I am also very active with my daughter's Girl Scouts troop whose scout house is located in Narberth. I am a small business owner in Ballack Kinwood. And my family is very active in our synagogue located Marion Station. As you can see, we are very invested in Lower Marion. If elected to the school board, I will want to join the subcommittees of finance, curriculum, facilities and purchasing and intergovernmental. I would make a good fit for the subcommittees with my skills and knowledge as a small business owner. As a small business owner, I understand the working within a budget, being fiscally responsible and not overextending debt usage. In addition, I manage my family's real estate properties where I work with vendors from small to large projects and address regular annual maintenance work. Also, my daughter attends one of the six elementary schools in the district, which gives me an insight to see if the curriculum is successful or needs to be adjusted. I want to work with the Lower Marion Township in Narberth to provide a safer passageway for our students to arrive at school. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca. Next, we will go to Jaime Garcia.
Hi. Wait, my time starting now?
Starting now.
Okay Jaime Garcia, I live in Penn Valley. I have two children that are currently attending Welsh Valley Middle School. If elected to the school board, the committees that I think I would be a best fit for, based on my experience, would be the finance committee because I spent 10 years working at a variety of asset management firms here in Philadelphia. And the curriculum committee because in my current role as a account executive, I'm very involved with setting strategy for clients as well as the execution of such strategies and creating metrics and benchmarks to evaluate progress along the way. I did not get the, I did not get these questions in advance. So I don't have a written response. So my answers are coming from my heart. And I'm very excited to be running for this position because I honestly, I feel a call to serve. My background prior to financial services was in the military where I did 10 years as an artillery officer, including one tour in Iraq. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jamie, I'll make sure you get them. They're not due until next week anyway. Juanita Kerber is next.
Hello, everyone. I'm Juanita Kerber and I live in Artmore. I have a middle schooler. And the reason why I want to run for the school board is to help provide a positive impact in my community. The best fit that I see for myself when the subcommittees would be curriculum, policy, equity and anti racism. And the reason being the qualifications that I have from my 40 years of experience working for Penn Medicine as a clinical imaging analyst. I'm compassionate. I'm able to listen and troubleshoot issues. And a part of troubleshooting issues is to discover the root causes of those issues. I'm also very personable. I'm willing to listen and talk with anyone. And I also like to engage in conversations to get to the heart of the matter. And also to be able to have those challenging, uncomfortable conversations in order to get things done for our children. With everything hinging today, we all need to be cohesive to help our children and protect education. Thank you.
Thank you. Summer Khan.
Good evening and thank you to the committee. My name is Summer Khan and I'm running for the Lower Marion School Board because every child deserves a school where they feel supported and prepared for their future. That takes more than just big ideas. It requires strong leadership, responsible governance and a commitment to bringing people together. I'm a community leader with deep experience overseeing budgets, setting goals and ensuring accountability. As a trustee for the Gladwin Free Library and a board member of the Lower Marion Historical Society, I have worked to strengthen our community. Beyond our district, I've helped shape career readiness policies at the county and state levels, ensuring students are prepared for life beyond high school. My vision is simple. Our schools should work for every child and every family deserves to help shape them. If elected, I will champion equity for all students, support balanced budgeting and responsible investments, expand career readiness efforts and amplify community outreach because families deserve a real say in our schools. If selected, my experiences would make me the best fit for the legislative and policy committees. For the legislative, I'll use my policy experience and connections to bring resources into our district and ensure LMSD has a strong voice in advocating for itself. On policy, I'll help craft policies that support all members of our community because policies aren't just rules. They shape the student experience. At the end of the day, I'm running to make sure every student has the opportunity to thrive. And I'm ready to bring that experience to Lower Marion. Thank you.
Yeah. Jennifer Rivera. No, I'm sorry. Rich Lester. My eye slipped. I'm sorry.
Okay. I want to thank the committee, the Democratic Committee of Lower Marion for hosting this event. My name's Rich Lester. I'm running for school board. And the reason I'm running is actually pretty simple. Back in October of 23, my son Eli came home and said, Dad, let's watch the school board candidate forum. And he wanted to see who was overseeing the schools and the education he was receiving. About 30 minutes into the forum, he said to me, Dad, you have some time. I think you should run. And so that led to really interesting conversations amongst my family. I then broadened my research into talking to 20 plus community members, ex-board members, people in the administration, people who ran other school boards. And instead of being discouraged about, you know, bad, discouraged about things, I was actually energized. I felt like there's a big opportunity to improve in already good school district. My background in the community includes serving on Penn Hill L's board. I'm involved with Mainline Reform Temple speakers series and other community activities. From a business standpoint, I've been an entrepreneur. I started an animal health business that grew from business plan to $150 million in revenue, 1,200 people on the team. And so I have deep experience in leading and managing and building organizations. With that background, I'd want to serve on the finance and the curriculum committees of the board. Thank you.
Um, next would be Jennifer Rivera.
Thank you, Adrian. And I would like to use my chip for this portion of our forum. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Rivera. And we'd like to share with you, one, education has the power to transform lives. And I am running for the Lower Marion School Board because I believe every child in our district deserves an exceptional education, one that nurtures them academically, emotionally and socially. Our schools should empower students to reach their full potential, support our teachers with the resources that they need and foster strong partnerships with our families. With over 20 years of experience working closely with leaders and boards, I bring a deep understanding of policy, governance and fiscal oversight. Having served on the finance audit and investment committees, I understand the critical importance of transparency, fiscal responsibility and strategic budgeting, ensuring that every dollar spent directly benefits our students and strengthens our schools. I also know that sound policies lay the foundation for student success. And I am committed to working collaboratively to craft policies that support teachers, enhance educational programs and maintain the excellence of our school district and what it's known for. So I am ready to bring to you my expertise in finance, policy and consensus building to the board, ensuring we make smart, forward-thinking decisions that our children are put first. Together, we can uphold a standard of excellence that makes Lower Marion a leader in education and create an even stronger future for our students. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. And now we have Carrie Sautner.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Adrian, for doing this. And thank you all of the Democratic Committee members as well as the public. This is an amazing turnout to hear some amazing people running. So I'm really impressed as always with my neighbors. My name's Curry Sautner. If you don't know me, and right now I serve on the school board. I actually am the president of the school board currently. I'm running for reelection because I believe we need strong, stable leadership through yet another superintendent transition from this district. This will parlay into really these conversations about committees, but it really ensures that every student has access to high-quality education. And that means so much for our district, so much for our district when we talk about committees. But when we don't address the through lines of these committees, like when our kids need to be ensured that they have the high-quality tools that they need to be successful. When our children are special education children, when our children are in the gifted program, when our children are a part of the entire, entire field. You have three positions of power when you serve on the board. The three biggest areas are curriculum, policy and finance. For curriculum, I've actually written an entire course and a curriculum is far more than just the assessments and the lesson plans. It is the entire course. I wrote one on the Constitution for high schoolers. It's nationally known. And I also worked in evaluation. So I really believe that the work that I do in the intergovernmental, in finance, I also run an organization with a capital budget. All these pieces are so important. And I can't wait to talk to you more about it tonight. Thank you, Adrian.
You're welcome. And Anna Shorrock, last but not least.
Hey, I would also like to I would also like to use my chip for this portion. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I knew my husband and I made the right choice where to raise our three daughters when our oldest started first grade at Kinwood. Her class was exactly what makes our district special, a vibrant, diverse group of students with families united by a shared purpose, that their children would grow up in a supportive and inclusive community that values learning, truth and individuality. The beginning of that first year was magical, but then the disruption of COVID hit. Even when schools reopened, we faced immense challenge, a heartbreaking mental health crisis and a public education system that's forever changed. We learned that we must center student voice and experience in every decision we make, ensuring they feel safe, heard and supported as they navigate a world very different from the one that we grew up in. I am a teacher, an advocate for educational access and the executive director of Teach for America Greater Philadelphia. My career has been defined by fighting for our kids. I've been proud to apply my passion for service to the school board for the past three and a half years. We've accomplished so much, implementing Full Day K, adjusting school start times, preserving Oakwell and negotiating a fair teacher contract that avoided strike, all while navigating four superintendent transitions. We have so much more to do. Recently, my own faith and my family's Jewish identity have been the subject of a public conversation on what it means to stand against antisemitism, support the Jewish state and advance the cause of anti racism. I've addressed these issues elsewhere, but I'll say here that this situation has only strengthened my resolve to put my energy into kids, to lead with empathy and to move past this divisive climate and to focus on healing and collaboration in our community. I'm running for reelection because I believe in this community. I believe in our students. And I believe that when we're grounded in individual student need, fiscal stability and our shared humanity, we can build a future where every child thrives, every voice matters and where we lead with integrity and purpose. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm going to have Alan spotlight everyone. Because we're going to have you get your papers and markers ready for some yes, no questions.
So I'm unable to spotlight everyone.
Okay.
It stops at four, so we should be.
I'm going, I'm on it here. I have Jaime. We need Jen. The instruction said nine we can do. Do I have Rebecca? I have Carrie. We don't have Rich. We have Summer now. Yes. Yes, we have Summer. There she is. And.
Everyone's there.
Eight, that's it. Everyone. All right. Get your pens and pens. Your markers and papers ready. All right. Here's the question. Before attending that committee meeting that that you wanted to be a part of, will you commit to reading and understanding all the materials? There it is. Okay, everybody said yes, even though some of them are a little fuzzy. Okay. Then the next part is also yes, no. Do you commit to reading and understanding all the materials, even from committees you're not on, before voting at a school board business meeting? Now, I knew you were all going to say yes. Okay, but I wanted to get you on the record. So that's what, that was the purpose of that question. So, next, for our next question, we're going to start with Jaime Garcia. Did I at least, did I say that right? I have like.
You did.
Okay, I have no ability to do any languages. I have enough trouble with English. So this one is a really important question and I'm, I think that a lot of people tuned in for it. We're giving you each two minutes to answer this. Many parents and students have expressed at board meetings that they feel their concerns are not taken seriously when antisemitic, homophobic, racist and other discriminatory behaviors occur in the schools. How do you propose strengthening the trust the students and parents have in the school's ability to respond to discrimination and bullying effectively? And Jaime, you have two minutes or 120 seconds.
Thanks. Yeah, so I, let me make sure I'm answering the correct question here. It's how do we build trust as the board when talking about issues such as discrimination, anti LGBTQ and antisemitism and make sure that the community feels they are being heard? Is that approximately what the question was?
Well, it's more that when, you're close. But when parents come in front of the board or students come in front of the board with a complaint or an incident, they don't feel like they're being taken seriously enough.
Yeah, and so as a parent who has spoken at the board and shared feedback, my experience with with antisemitic incident that my son experienced earlier this year, you know, I think it's a very personal thing, right? I felt in that moment that the board was empathetic and they heard me. But I also did that months after, you know, some of the more inflammatory incidents happened. I think the best thing that we can do is, any administration can do is provide transparency, right, and accountability. So if, if parents are raising these issues, if there is a mechanism to track, you know, whether it's antisemitism, discrimination, anti LGBTQ, we're tracking and sharing, right? Because when it happens to your child, it feels very personal and it's difficult not to get wrapped in the emotion. When you take a step back and see the data, maybe you'll see that it's, it's not an endemic. Maybe it's, maybe interpersonal. Or the opposite, maybe there is a problem that the, you know, the administration is not addressing appropriately. I think in our, in our case, you know, I think it did not make it past the school council, but I didn't, we didn't have an issue with that. Personally, because the way my son felt about what happened. However, that's not the case for every family. So if there is a mechanism to report and share and provide this transparency to the community, I think we have a responsibility to do so. I don't believe, I don't know of any privacy laws that would prevent us. I don't know if it's a technology shortcoming. And if so, it's, I don't, I don't believe that it'd be too difficult to create a dashboard. But I do think that we should be tracking and sharing and being transparent with the community. We had a saying in the military, what gets, what gets measured gets managed. And so if you're, if you have the quantitative statistics and the qualitative stories to report and share, you should. And I think we're all doing it from a good place. So that's how I feel about that.
Okay, thank you. Juanita, you'd be next.
I believe that as parents and the administration, the relationship that we bring to that table begins with not only our children, but also as Jaime mentioned, is to be wary of other children as well. So it begins with the school first. I think that they have good interventions in place. And if there are persistent issues between any child or any person that is continuing to cause those types of disruptions and racist tropes, that it should be tracked and we should have the ability to know what the mechanisms are. So I think those mechanisms could be documented just so that we are aware of what they are. I believe that we also need to know just in numbers of how often and frequently these issues are occurring so that we can continue to offer the best interventions, training and also work with the parents. I think if there's a combined collaborative process that we can help teach, it's the same as bullying, it's the same as harassment and that no one should have to go through that. No one should feel marginalized. There was a child, I think it was in New Jersey recently, who was experiencing racism. And it led to an unfortunate event. She ended up committing suicide because she was being made fun of with ICE immigration status with her parents. So we, we do need to track it and we do need to offer all the best intentions for our children.
Thank you, Juanita. Summer Khan.
Thank you. So I believe that every student deserves to feel safe, valued and seen for who they are. I have attended board meetings and I have heard directly as to how painful those experiences have been for our parents and for our students. I will ensure that I'll work with the superintendent and the leadership to ensure that the lines of communication stay open, that there is representation and that there is direct communication. And I agree with my colleagues over here that we should be tracking it. We should be qualitatively and quantitatively tracking these metrics and figuring out a solution to help counter. This is the number one concern for our parents, is the fear and anxiety of our, of our children not feeling safe in school. I will support antisemitism training and all types of hate and anti-bias trainings to ensure that there is inclusive community and that there's a safe learning, a safe learning community for our students to feel supported and ultimately for their success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Lester.
Hi. So I was at the school board meeting in November when a middle school student from Welsh Valley talked about an antisemitic incident. The school board reacted appropriately with showing empathy after that, after his discussion of what happened to him. At the end of that board meeting, I talked to acting assistant superintendent Scott Weinstein. I said, Scott, are we tracking data on hate across the school district? Both antisemitic incidents, racist incidents, all types of hate incidents. And he said to me that there was not a lot of tracking, but there was an information system that might be available now that the school has implemented recently to be able to track it. I then, I emailed school board president Sautner afterwards and I asked Curry the same question. And she got back to me and said, well, there's sort of some data tracking, but it's not very good. And the reality is it's about priority and good governance. If the school board determines that this is a big issue and it's one of our five or six priorities, we need to track the data, we need to report on it to the community on a quarterly basis. And then the principals will know, hey, this is a priority and they'll make it really important to track the data and then we'll report on it. And this, when I talk about good governance being an important part of any school district, it's setting priorities, it's tracking data around it, reporting it back to the community. And then when we implement training programs, we can see if those training programs move the data and improve what's happening to our kids. And so my overall view is obviously this is a critical issue. It should be one of our top five priorities and that we need to work together to develop tracking. We need to also develop mechanisms where on an individual basis, parents feel heard. But, and they hear that there is action taken in their individual issues. But the school board's responsibility is almost as important along the lines of tracking the aggregate data and making sure we have programs to move and improve.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Next, we have Jennifer Rivera.
Adrian, if you don't mind, I just want to make sure I answer the question. Can you repeat it again? Because I pretty much, I feel like, you know, it's great these, but I just want to make sure we get to the root of what you were asking. And that was parents feeling like they're not.
Funny because I have in my things. Well, ask if I should reread after Rich.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I get to the root of that question. So I'm glad we're on the same page, Adrian. So just to reiterate. Um, so just to reiterate for um, those listening, Adrian, do you mind?
No, not at all. Um, many parents and students have expressed at board meetings that they feel their concerns are not taken seriously when antisemitic, homophobic, racist and other discriminatory discriminatory behaviors occur in the schools. Uh, how do you propose strengthening the trust that students and parents have in the district's ability to respond to discrimination and bullying effectively?
Thank you, Andrew Adrian. Trust is so important. Um, I truly believe that the success of the success of our schools is deeply connected to the success of our entire community. The district cannot do this work alone and we need to engage with everyone. And making everyone feel like they're concerned, they're being heard by the board is so important. And that's why engaging with our community to ensure that their public concerns are heard and reflected in policy decisions while keeping operational responsibilities in the hands of administration. And that's so important as a board member, as a candidate running for the school board, that we have the trust in our community, that you know that we care about what's going on, that you are seen and that you are heard. Just as though, just like the school board expects to hold the superintendent accountable, we are accountable to you as a community, as families, students, taxpayers, we are held accountable to you. And not one concern should not go unnoticed. Yes, we all have experienced hurt or trauma in some way or fashion. And I hope as a school board, we could address these concerns and that it will unify us and not divide us. And I think the one way that we could unify each other is how can we build trust as a school board with our community? How can we feel that those um, comments that are in community comments are being heard, responded to, whether directly in a meeting or followed up at a meeting? But I believe that the success of this community is all based on our community working together. So the voices of everyone and making sure that you feel seen and heard is extremely important.
Thank you. Um, Rebecca Brodsky.
Um, I think one of the issues is that we we need data on this issue. However, I believe there might be underreporting that students feel they do not want to report these incidents because they feel backlash. So we need to increase communications between the students and their counselors and their teachers to to, you know, show them that it it's okay that you will not face any backlash, you know, be brave and speak with someone that you trust an adult. Um, I think addressing these issues, we also need to increase communication with parents and and, excuse me, um, with parents and teachers and maybe after an incident happened, um, have a town hall in the school, make it especially um, have a town hall. So students realize and parents realize, you know, something did happen. Let's not, you know, sweep it under the rug. Um, no child should feel unsafe uh, in regards to if they are LGBTQ, um, if they are Asian, if they are Jewish, if they are Muslim, they should feel welcome into school. They should feel welcome and and be able to safely learn. Um, I think we need to work with our counselors and students and teachers, work with everyone in the building to make sure um, hate does not exist in Low American.
Okay, thank you. Um, Anna Shorrock.
Thanks, Adrian. Um, so you know, we are very lucky to live in a community that has excellent administrators and teachers that care so much about our students and families who are so involved. What we have in place already is the safe to say system and also our bullying form. And in listening to the feedback from community this year, while some instances were being supported and our teams were able to um, deal and respond to those very quickly, we also have heard the need to be able to aggregate the data, see where there are trends, see where there's success to really learn and grow together to ensure we're meeting the concerns. And so we have approved a program, a reporting system called SWISS, which is a behavioral reporting system that we hope will help admin be able to bolster the systems of support and response, provide the data to the community like we talked about. I heard my other colleagues mention. Um, but also use that data to really mine and lift up best practices that we know are already happening. When there's concerns, and I think Hamei mentioned this, he his concern didn't ever rise to coming to a board meeting because he felt it was handled wonderfully at the school. That's the ideal situation. And so when we think about some of the underlying concerns, I'm also really thinking about moving forward. How do we work as a community to, in this political context, find ways to not be divisive, to understand there are challenges? The biggest misnomer in how we address how any students feel is that by addressing the needs of one student or one group of students, it doesn't take away from another group of students. And as a community and as a a school community, as a board, I think if we continue to prioritize this mindset, which is in alignment with our values as a school, will make great success. Um, when I think about what I'm most excited about is our superintendent who's coming in, Dr. Renelli. One of the strongest things in his interview process was how to center student voice and understanding exactly how students are feeling. And I believe that our student voice and understand how these issues are manifesting in our schools will be our biggest key to solving them in the future.
Thank you. I didn't thank everybody after they spoke. I meant to. So I just wanted to say that. So um, Curry Sotner. I'm watching.
Yep, Iowa, keep it moving. Um, so of course, when we think about the role of the school, um, we have to think clearly about this as this is good governance. What do you do with good governance? You know, the clear rule of law, everybody knows the expectations, your transparency on what's going on, and then there's accountability. So yes, we need a holistic view of each school, each kind of grouping, the elementary, the middle, the high school. But we also need to understand what is the patterns overall. The team has been moving so successfully on trying to understand how they can capture the data and reflect. They have data from year after year, but the questions that we really have been grappling with is, is that effective data? You get bad data in, you don't get good data out. So sure, we can create a dashboard, but a part of that is ensuring that our kids and our teachers and our community are well trained, especially our teachers and our school leadership, to understand, is that incident labeled and how should we label it? And then how do we make sure we're using the systems that we spend our budget on to really make sure that this system's accountable? Legally, we cannot talk about the details of kids and we shouldn't morally. But we can have a dashboard that shows our community, where are we working and where are we not? And then we need to pause for a second and say, how do we fix this together? Because this is not just something alone for the school to fix, but it's for all of us work together. We did really effective work together when it was school start start times, when it was uh, full day K, when it was Oakwell. And they were heated conversations, not so painful like this, but they were definitely heated. We need to increase those coffee and conversations. We need to increase that engagement and get back to our basics. The other things that I will have to add, we need to really make sure that our policy is doing what it needs to be doing. Can't wait till our superintendent is in and that superintendent gets a chance to build out his cabinet for the team that we need. And finally, last but not least, we have to talk to the kids. We're forgetting that our kids know so much and we need to value their voice in all of this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just uh, wanted to clarify something. Um, the only question that the candidates got beforehand was for the opening question. Um, Hamei was talking about the four extra questions that we sent to um, the candidates for a for a written response. So um, I just wanted to make that clear. Um, only the opening question was given to all the candidates. Nobody else has any of the questions that I've been asking. All right? Thank you. Um, oh, eh, keep your um, papers and markers ready. Okay, I'll start highlighting some people too. We have everybody. Yay. Okay. Now, I realize for the incumbents, um, it's going to be a way bigger number than anybody else. But how many school board and committee meetings have you attended or watched in the last two years? You might have to write infinity for you too. Around ten. Jamie, Jamie's been very, Himei's been very busy. I saw that said fifty plus. Um,
Begin.
Ten to twenty and around ten. And this includes the ones that you've watched. So if you didn't add that into your number, about third, okay. Um, Rebecca said about ten, correct? Shake your head. Ten to twenty. Um, I think um, Jennifer has about twenty. Um, and then Carrie, a lot. Um, Hamei fifty plus, eight for summer. Um, Juanita has about thirty and Rich has about ten. Okay. And um, so, all right, that's um, that's great. And then we go to the next question. All right. For this question, we'll start with Juanita Kerber. You have thirty, ninety seconds. As a board member, how will you work with um, administration to finally make progress in closing the achievement gap in Lower Marion School District? You have ninety seconds.
Uh, as a board member, um, I think it's important for me to look at the best models that will help to determine how to close the gap. But um, overall, I think it's also important to recognize that each case, uh, we may be dealing with issues that doesn't get reported. Uh, there are a lot of families that have dynamics that um, doesn't have the same type of beginnings with everyone else um, in terms of preschool or also in terms of having the access to the same types of resources as everyone else. So there are a lot of variables that we also need to take in consideration and have better data about that. Um, I think those are the things to take to address and realize that there might be certain things about this achievement gap that it's going to be really hard to break those barriers, but it doesn't mean that we have to give up. I think that we can expose and enrich our children so that they do have the same opportunities and standings as other children um, who have tutoring, um, who have other things, other people in their lives that can provide that additional help. But we can recognize that there are still, there are still ways that we can close the gap, but there are obstacles that prevent it as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Summer Khan.
Thank you. So I have heard uh, directly from many parents, um, and what I've heard is that we really need to focus on expanding opportunities, including tutoring opportunities, recognizing that additional academic support is truly needed for student success. As a school board member, I can't change everything overnight, but I can make sure that we are addressing these gaps with urgency and we must be accountable. My goal is going to ensure, is going to be to ensure that every child in Lower Marion gets the support, the resources and the opportunities needed to succeed. One of the initiatives is expanding our academic support programs, ensuring that students who are struggling receive the help that they need. This could involve partnerships with local universities where college students serve as tutors or leveraging our community volunteers for that additional academic support. Uh, we need to look at early intervention programs. We have enough research to support that students who receive targeted support early on in reading and math in their early grades are far more likely to be successful in their future. I would also advocate for professional development of teachers, ensuring that they have the training and the resources because they are the ones who are responsible for delivering the curriculum uh, to support the diverse learning needs of our students. And most importantly, we must engage with our families, recognizing that parental involvement is crucial in student success. And by improving communication between schools and families and making sure parents have access to resources to support learning at home, we can help minimize that achievement gap. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Rich uh, Rich Lester.
Thank you. So we've been in Lower Marion for eighteen years and since arriving here, I've heard issues about the achievement gap. And I know that a lot of effort's been made, but a lot of progress hasn't been made because we're still talking about it. The first thing I would want to do is talk to groups like the NAACP and others and ask what districts around the country have made real progress with it? And then go out and meet and talk to those folks and see what programs have actually worked in specific districts that look like ours, feel like ours, so that we can actually learn from the successes of others. Um, I'm not deep in understanding what we have been trying, but there are new things that should be tried because we are not making the progress because we're still asking this question. The other thing that's also pretty clear from from the data and the education research is that the earlier you have intervention and education for kids, the better chance of success that they have. And so opening up full day K for all of our kids is a first step in getting kids earlier and getting them more educated. It is really expensive potentially to look at um, universal pre-K, but there are ways and there are districts that are doing it and we need to start thinking about how do we intervene early? And then most importantly, I think we need to learn from others who are being successful.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you. Um, so student achievement disparities arises from resource disparities, diverse learning needs and systemic barriers. And it's so important as a board that we help parents navigate their child's assessments. We help parents strengthen their advocacy skills. Tutoring and funding for after school enrichment programs is so important. Equity, 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 making sure every student has what they need to be successful. And then consistency in measuring students' progress. We need to hold administration and our teachers accountable to consistency measuring all students the same when it comes to their progress in the district. Thank you, Adrian.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rebecca. Rebecca, I'm sorry.
No. First and foremost, I think we need to review the screening for early um, screening for gifted and also um, work with the community of special education to make sure our students are uh, getting the support they need, especially in the black and Hispanic groups. Um, in the comprehensive plan on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight, um, there were comments in there that PSSA scores have been decreasing in in the in the students, the black students. Um, we need to focus kind of adjust our resources uh, towards that group to help them uh, close the achievement gap. Um, but also, you know, work with the teachers and work with all staff members to um, get feedback to say, you know, what what are we missing? Um, what else can we do? What other resources do we need to invest? Uh, so the achievement gap can be reduced. Um, and it needs to be, you know, evaluated year after year, not uh, you know, you know, every, every three years or whenever, whenever the students are taking their PSSAs. Also, not every year the PSSA subjects are very similar, so we need to. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, she had fifteen seconds? I'm sorry, I thought it said stop.
No worries, no worries. So yeah, I think we need to implement, you know, use the more of the support of the, you know, community of the special education, working with all the support groups. Maybe even having a little bit smaller forums within each local schools with meeting with these parents, especially new incoming families.
I'm so sorry, I could have sworn I saw the stop thing. I, I seriously apologize. So so Jaime, it is your turn.
Yeah, this is such an important question and one that I think affects me deeply and personally as someone who, for whatever reason, could take a standardized test and do really well on them, but was horrible academically. I think there were times where it had not been for the intervention of my parents. I could have been a, it could have been a different story for me. Where, you know, just because I didn't get on as a teacher, a teacher didn't, didn't appreciate where I was coming from. You know, I was, I was kid. I think that this achievement gap is, there's a lot of things that are, that are at play. There's things that, to Juanita's point, that are, that go back hundreds of years and there's affect, there's things that we just can't, we don't have control over. But for me, where I would like to start is to understand what, what's been working, right? What, how, what have they, what has been the impact of the investment already made? How are we defining success? You know, in the short, medium and long term? And finally, what steps can we take to get there? I don't think this is a problem that gets solved in one term. We've had, you know, equal rights in this country for less than fifty years and we're already talking about getting rid of them. So this is something that requires constant attention and I think we need to live up to the, our values of diversity, equity, inclusion, as stated in the Lower Marion School Board Policy website, whatever.
Thank you.
I should have used a chip.
Oh, you want to use, you want another twenty seconds?
Yeah, I want another twenty, no, I'm joking. No, I think it, yeah, I do want another twenty second that I, you know, it's something that I think everyone here is hearts in the right place and everyone has great ideas. I would love to understand what's been working and honestly hear from the families who feel they're, they're being left behind. Right? And, you know, in spite of the resources being, being put towards this problem, we're not solving it. So clearly, we're not, what we're doing is not working.
Can I use a chip? So.
Wait a minute, let's find, let's find you. Let's highlight, you know, give us a second.
Okay. So to continue that discussion, and as I mentioned regarding today's climate, with the possibility of public education being deconstructed, torn away, done away with, I think it's so important that as we're all been stating, that this is a collaborative effort and we have to open up resources for our children to be able to cross over. So I think we can form grassroots efforts to provide those resources to our children in need and help with the gap.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Juanita. All right, where was, sorry, we had to have the right paper. So it's now Carrie and then Anna.
Okay, I might be calling my chip on this one because this is, this is really complex and there's a lot going on. So I have an elementary ed master's degree. I taught in kindergarten in West Philadelphia. And when we look at this data locally across the state and nationally, we see all of these trends and we do see these trends going down and we're extremely concerned nationally around language, English, language arts and math. But we need to look at this in two different ways when we focus all that data and we start to look at our own kids in our own schools. And we can break this data down. Every single year we break this data down and you'll hear or repeat it again, like digging into this data and saying, where are we successful? Where are we not? By school? By grade? By gender and race, all these pieces, we can find out so much of this information and still we're slipping the kids and we're failing the kids. We need to look at it two ways. What are the interventions that we need to do to move our kids forward? And where do we need to put those interventions? Yes, data will tell us K through three is really, we really want you dig in those interventions. And full day K was one of the reasons why it was so important. There were already, there had already been full day K programs in Lower Marion that were helping kids at need. But it's the kids that don't get caught. It's the kids that are in the middle that still need that support so they can be successful for life in math and language arts and reading, those tools. I'm using my chip, so I'm adding that twenty to that thirty to get fifty because I like math. The other data that we need to look at too is the NAP data. The NAP data came out this year. It was also on math and reading. And we can see across the country, the entire country dropped during COVID and then dropped again even lower. And there's one or two school districts that do well. The state of Louisiana actually did very well. They don't have a lot of public schools. There's a lot of private and charter schools, but that doesn't mean we can't learn from other people. So what are our trusted and true interventions? And did we have the twenty second chip to this? Just making sure. We did, okay. Trusted and true interventions and we need to lean on our community. There are Democratic Committee members that are teachers like Penny. Who wants to tutor. Okay, take my other chip. Okay, I'll do it on this one. This one matters so much. Language and the language system is changing. The training that our teachers need and the curriculum that we need to really bring in, we need to balance all these things. It is not, you know what, I'll do this and I'll add this and bring in one support and it'll be done. This is a difficult thing for the entire United States. We should do better in Lower Marion. We should be a model for the rest of the country, but we need to catch up and be creative and curious about this and learn from others. Thank you.
Anna.
Thanks, Adrian. So I'm just going to pick up where Curry left off. So as we think about what we're already doing in the district, this is also a point where we really have to grapple with the instability we've seen in our district over the past five years. Not only in the superintendent transitions, but in the cabinet level transitions of assistant superintendent, curriculum supervisors. Some of those transitions were for the better. Some of them have caused a lot of instability. When we break down our district, data across the district, we can really see a few things. We could, we need to dig into, why are our blacks and brown students that attend Pennwin? Why have they, the achievement gap or the, I'm sorry, the opportunity gap? Why has it widened for them by fifteen percentage points while our white students have stayed stagnant? Why have our black and brown students at Ballackinwood Middle School and at Welsh Valley Middle School had a huge widening of the opportunity gap while our students at Blackrock have had less of one? When we start to really find these different points where we can learn more from the data, we're able to apply the type of interventions that Curry has mentioned and learn from others. It's the kind of work that I am well positioned to continue with Curry and others on the board because we already have built relationships with our administrators. Because of some math tracking situations, we uncovered this the past few months, we were able to change a system that was potentially causing a negative impact and are already working in partnership with the administration to look at when do our students come into Lower Marion versus assuming that all of our black and brown students in Lower Marion are facing the same challenges? It's that type of individuality, unique approach that we need to continue to really work towards closing the opportunity gap in our district.
Thank you. So ju- just, just to keep our audience so they understand, the questions were put together by the Issues and Policy Committee beforehand. These had to be approved by our DC LMN Chair before we asked them. There are a lot of good things coming through. I'm, I'm watching the chat. So you know that if you're writing, I'm reading. So and I want you to know that I will be saving the chat. And the questions that I feel haven't been answered, I will put forth to the candidates. And maybe we can do, maybe there can be another forum done. So I, so that some of these things can be answered. I know for the community, it's not enough. I don't think it's enough either for for our committee. But this is the time we have. So let's see what we can do. All right. Now I have to figure out where we were. Here we are. Get your papers and pencils ready. Alan was ahead of me and he got you all highlighted. This is a, this is a number question. How many hours a month do you think this position requires? And I'm going to ask you all to put your things up at the same time.
Adrian, counting hours in committee and board meetings or on top of those?
How many hours does it take? Do you think it takes to be an effective school board member?
Got it. Thank you.
Hi, honey. Deb, I'm watching the school board meeting.
Nancy, please mute. Okay, is everybody ready? On the count of three. One, two, three.
Was it a month or week? Sorry.
A month.
Okay, a hundred hours a month, yeah. Okay, I need to do math then because that was just a week.
Okay.
So mine's a hundred for a month.
Okay. And Rich, I can't see yours.
Forty to fifty.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys. You know what you're getting into. So now we're going to start, we'll start with Summer on this question and it's also ninety seconds. Okay. And I'll okay. According to the law, providing a free and appropriate education also applies to students with disabilities. Are our special ed programs achieving their goals? If not, what steps will you have the administration take?
Thank you. So every student deserves access to a high-quality education that meets, that meets their individual needs and that includes our special education students. This is not an optional expense. This is a fundamental responsibility of our district. As a board member, I will ensure that we allocate resources effectively to support special education programs, provide our teachers with professional development resources and address the gaps that we're seeing in servicing, in, in the, in the issues that parents have raised. I also believe that we need to take a proactive approach, working closely with our special education activists, active advocates, our different organizations that work closely with our district, our parents and educators to anticipate challenges beforehand in order to avoid larger conflicts. We need to approach with a conflict mitigation approach and a conflict resolution approach so that things don't go beyond. By fostering collaboration between the district and special education families, we will be able to build the trust that's needed and to ensure that our most vulnerable students are getting the services that need to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Lester. Unmute yourself. Okay.
So I've spent some time meeting with Kara and Robin, who run the Committee on Special Education. I've talked with a number of special ed parents. And I'd say that the reviews have been mixed, that some kids are getting the attention that they deserve and the need and their needs are being met and others are dissatisfied with the situation. Probably the most interesting conversation I've had so far was with an attorney that specializes in advocacy for special needs kids. And the, the key piece of that conversation was what districts are doing a really good job and how does Lower Marion compare? Because most parents only experience Lower Marion. They don't experience multiple districts. And the attorneys who actually advocate are an interesting resource. And I can, the one attorney I've talked to definitely felt that there were gaps and ways to improve what we do. I expect to talk to a few more to get a wider set of data so that we can have some real information about how do we compare to what other districts are doing? And by the way, who do we go talk to to learn from those districts? And so my view is, one, obviously we need to support every child. And two, we need to figure out where the best practices are. And at least from one data point who has a wide view, our, our district doesn't rank in their minds from a best practices standpoint and we have rooms to improve. And so that's the homework I plan to continue. If I get endorsed and put more effort into this campaign. But making some progress on it.
Thank you. I've gotten corrected in the chat and it's according to the law, providing a free and appropriate public education also applies to students with disabilities. So I just wanted to let them know I am paying attention. Jennifer, it's your turn.
Thanks, Adrian. So put in perspective of over eighteen hundred students receive services. That's about twenty-five percent of the district that receives services through our special education program. And I am, it has been acknowledged by the board administration that it's not perfect, but I am encouraged by the work that is being done by the administration and what our current board is holding. The worked, our administration accountable to our current board. They said it's going to take till the end of the year for them to fully report, but I am encouraged by some of the work that is being done on stakeholder input. Right now they're collaborating with CSC, the Committee for Special Education. They're having educational series regarding special education in our district. They're working in getting parent and guardian feedback sessions. They're working on staff and administration feedback sessions. They're also working on focus groups with identified special education staff and also school visits. And I think this is so important to acknowledge. We aren't perfect in this area. They're acknowledging work needs to be done. But I do, and encourage that they're realizing that all voices matter in this process and collaboration is essential so that all students, especially in our, the twenty-five percent in our district in the special education who are receiving services, receive the best resources and educational opportunities so they could achieve in this district as well.
Thank you. Rebecca Brodsky.
Sorry, Adrian, can you just repeat the question?
According to the law, providing a free and appropriate public education also applies to students with disabilities. Our, are our specialized programs achieving their goals? If not, what steps will you have the administration to check? Take, rather.
First and foremost is making sure the student gets screened for special education, make sure we, that they do have an IEP, a five oh four or gifted IEP also. Also, now when parents are concerned, because I spoke with one parent, she was concerned, now her daughter you know, might need it. Some support. Some support, there was some, you know, pushback from it. So I think we really need to work with the parents and counselors to make sure the students gain their support. So I think the best is also to work with a special, Committee of Special Education, have them, I know they host educational series, but also hold local series as well. Because sometimes parents don't have the time to, you know, attend the CSC meeting if it's morning or afternoon. I know there is Zoom. But sometimes meeting in person is a very different feel than meeting over Zoom. So I, I would definitely advocate for more CSC meeting on premises at the school that parents are having concerns. So I know each school has a representative, so if the representative can have a little form after the big CSC meeting, they can meet with the parents and kind of share what they learned.
Thank you. Jaime.
Yeah. As you say, I love that this is a topic we're discussing. I love that it's a topic that is topical for, for the board and for the community. I think it, it speaks a lot to who we aspire to be, that we're spending time on, on this to discuss it. And so are we meeting the goal? I don't, you know. Can we do better? Yes. Absolutely. I think that, you know, people here have spoken much more eloquently than I will about this issue because frankly, it's one that I'm not that informed about it. And I'm happy to admit that this is a shortcoming of mine. Do I think that we should be looking at best practices and, and benchmarks and, and seeing where we are realistically and what steps we can take within, you know, within, within our district to improve? I think that's exactly what we should be doing. I think that, that goes for all the topics that we've been discussing. You know, I, I think that striving for excellence is, is a continuous process. I think that these conversations are how we, how we get there. And I think that, you know, we, I'm, I am for one, you know, energized to see, one, the, the engagement from the, the chat and from the, from the panelists on this topic. So I'm happy to be sitting here and learning and, and really, you know, it's, I can't think of a better place to be.
Okay, thank you. Juanita Kerber.
So. I've spoken with some committee members who have had children with special needs. Mentioned that they felt so, what they received then and what they hear about today, it doesn't seem to them in their perspective that there, there has been much of a improvement. And so I think it would be helpful to have like a think tank that includes past and present, current parents. Speaking with teachers and what they see as lacking and their needs for helping to educate these children. I think that is important to make sure that these kids don't fall through the cracks because every child is, has the potential to be even greater than what we think. And, and I have shared this personal story with others regarding my nephew who was autistic and also had lupus. And he passed away recently in December. And the only reason why I mentioned this is because of how creative I later found out at the end of his life. He had a YouTube channel and he critique Pixar movies. And so he was very articulate on camera, but not so in person. So this tells me that every child's need has to be met because we could be missing the opportunity for a future leader, a future creator.
Thank you. Anna Scher.
Thanks, Adrian. So, you know, in the district, I think that we already have quite a bit of information that can help guide our next steps, especially as Dr. Rennelli comes in. And I'm glad to say and learn from his experience as he started as a special education teacher. And so that unique perspective, I think, will only strengthen our district's ability to respond and support our students and families. You know, in my own experience with navigating our special education system with both of my daughters, I've had a positive experience and also as a long time educator, I too have had challenges in knowing exactly what to navigate and how to navigate. And so one piece I really hope for our district to focus on that was also identified in the evaluation that was completed four years ago was about the way in which we communicate with our parents, the way we listen to our parents. If parents are saying kids need something and the district is saying that they don't, either understanding the various perspectives of what is coming up and/or working through those to mitigate any challenges. And once situations get to the admin level, having those respected and taken seriously. I also just want to say, we have so many amazing special education teachers and programs in our district that are really servicing so many of our students. So how do we build on those best practices, like one of my colleagues said, with some upcoming school visits that we are having? And be able to lean into the, with the state through other services and the structures we already have in place and the expertise we have on the, on the board in place to make change.
Okay, I don't know what happened to, oh, there's Anna. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Juanita looks great. No problem.
Yeah, I needed to scroll farther to find her.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we, we didn't get Carrie.
Let's talk about special ed. It's a big topic for me. Do you want me to start, Adrian?
There we go. Yes, you can start.
Great. And this is one of those topics that, um, we have, like Jennifer said earlier, we have about twenty-five percent of our kids that fall in that special ed category. And the, the law is not just fair and appropriate public education, but it's also in the least restrictive environment. So for me and my belief with my child and the work that I've done in special ed, it's also about inclusion. And the reason why inclusion matters so much for our kids in the least restrictive environment in their home school is because the data tells us that kids that are in an inclusive environment, when it's appropriate and how it's appropriate for them, it are going to be more, achieve more. Fifty years of data in two hundred and fifty countries tells us this. And that data is something we need to align up with our practices. How are we helping our kids and how are we valuing the voices of our parents? So so many times our parents play such a powerful role within the education system. Special education, they are the experts. They know their kids better than anybody. And that relationship between the teacher, the special ed teacher, the general ed teacher and that parent, that's what needs to be strengthened. That's what the Committee of Special Ed has been trying to do for years and have done so much great work on it. But let's not forget, this is the job of the superintendent and the cabinet. It is the role of the board to hold our superintendent accountable and therefore the superintendent to hold his team accountable. We need to get a strategic plan done and we need to stay front and center. We need to do better here. That is so much of what we're talking about too, tonight.
Okay, thank you. For. So we, we got everybody on this. Good. Next. For this question, we're going to start with Rich Lester. Okay, and this is. This is a quickie question. What do you think is one way you can plan to incorporate meaningful feedback from students? And you have forty-five seconds.
That's actually right up my alley. So the, one of the most interesting conversations I had as I was learning about the role of the school board and educating myself was with Amy Goldman, who ran the Radnor School District for eight years. And when I asked her what was her, the accomplishment she was most proud of, she said very quickly, without hesitation, adding a student to every, adding one high school student to each committee of the board and having them be active participants, not necessarily voting members. And incorporating student voices is really important. And her feedback to me was that parents don't know what they don't know and that the kids provided such meaningful feedback as participants. And so it's been on my website since I launched my campaign that that's one of the things I really advocate for is incorporating an individual student from one of the high schools on each committee.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer.
Um, yeah, real quick, so just a bounce back of what Rich said, we do have students that are incorporated on the school board that provide updates. But I would say I would want to ask the students to provide, be more transparent, radically transparent. It's great to hear, you know, oh, we had Valentine say this, but let's really get to the root of your concerns. But also, I'm all about boots on the ground. I mean, I engage with students at neighbors helping with neighbors. I got to engage with some of the youth in our Jewish community to really hear their concern from them and how I could support. I just attended the Black History Month program where Harrington students and Lower Merion students came together, got to meet some of those students, introduce myself, hear about their experiences. And then Scott, I will be coming to a lunch and learn. I want to interact with the students for them to get to know me as a candidate and hopefully their future board member.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca.
I think we should continue incorporating students, attend the school board meeting. And I believe we should, maybe in the middle school and high school level, have them be collaborating with the HSA meetings too, when there's open meetings or all meetings. Sometimes, you know, students do not share their activities during that week with parents. So parents sometimes are, you know, they don't know what's going on. So if students can be involved just as parents, you know, we can get more information, what's going on, more feedback and continue to just collaboration with and getting to know the students better, especially events. All the events that are happening around the community, we should be attending as well.
Okay. Thank you. Jaime.
Yeah, you know, I love this question and it was something I was thinking about as I was preparing for this today is I don't feel like we hear enough from the students about their perspective and their experience at, at the school. And I, as a parent, obviously, I, you know, I get the, the broad strokes, but having a formal channel like Rich recommended, I think, is probably the best way. And then really getting these kids to feel empowered and feel like their voices are heard. Some of my most enjoyable conversations are with teenagers, ironically, and I think they have a lot of interesting perspectives, things that I haven't thought of because I'm not experiencing growing up in this technology world. So I love the idea of empowering them. I love the idea of incorporating them and making them feel heard.
Okay. Juanita.
So. This is a great conversation. I'm thinking about my son who always has something to say about the lunches. And when he heard that I was running to become a candidate, he said, can you please do something about the lunches? And I, and I think it would be helpful to have definitely more input from middle schoolers. And as Jennifer mentioned, but being able to speak, be able to speak to issues that deeply affect them that they may not feel comfortable with talking about. So I think just like at the hospital when they have grand rounds, we can do some type of assembly where the school board could be, a school board member can participate in and ask those type of questions, like a grand rounds.
Thank you. Summer.
So I love this question. One of the fun, most fun things about being on the, or attending the board meetings was hearing our students come and give their input and their feedback. I love that. My experience in education for the, more than the bulk of my career has been supporting students, elevating their voices. I myself am a faculty advisor for a large student professional organization in my institution. I am a huge supporter of students being represented and their voices being heard. I would love for them to stay engaged with the board and join the committees. And this is also going to help cultivate their civic leadership skills and they will also learn directly on how boards govern. And so I would be a huge supporter of that. There's great work being done and more can be done as well, just to keep them engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
Great. This is a great one. I love this question. So real quick, one, I ran a program for policing in twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. We're, we had middle school and high school kids train every single Philadelphia police officer and Camden police officer, middle and high school kids. These kids can do way more than just sit in a committee meeting. I love that idea, but I think we could go bigger with this. These kids are brilliant and I think we need to start with putting them first instead of asking any adults. How do we get the kids' voice in here? Why don't we ask the kids? We can say, hey, guys, how do you want to do this? Our kids in the last two years wrote the civics policy and they wrote the civics policy about how to get their peers engaged in civics. They wrote the entire policy with support for Megan Schaefer. She rocked it. And she, they also ensured that it was peer-to-peer civic engagement. That's the power of kids. Let them tell you what they want and then you have to listen.
And Anna.
Yes, thank you. So similar, I was gonna mention on that civics policy, that has been some of my most fun work on the school board in the policy committee, working in partnership with high school students to write our policy for voter registration. So continuing to build on those opportunities, I think, is a real opportunity for us. In my former work as a chief schools officer and leading high schools, some of my favorite structures that we built with the high school and middle school students were being part of a superintendent's cabinet that really served to administer and work with each of the student governments of the schools to help support the, and advocate for the needs. I also think about tapping into great structures that are already in place, like the principal luncheons, teachers' things. And honestly, I was so inspired by Jennifer's response. I want to latch onto that and go to all the things with her. It's, it's, that sounds like a great idea. And how can we all do more of that in our role and as part of the community?
Right. So everybody wipe their brow. We're down to the closing question. And we are a teeny bit ahead of schedule. So what I'm going to do is give you guys, instead of ninety seconds, two minutes to answer this question. And a few of you do have chits left. Wait, let me go. Rebecca has two. Jaime has one. Juanita has one. Summer has two. Rich has two. Jennifer has one. And Anna has one. So if you want to use them for your closing statement, hold up your hand. I'm keeping track. All right, when it's, when I call, when it's your turn. Oh, it's your turn first. So. Jennifer, okay. Why are you a good candidate for the school board in this moment? You have two minutes.
In this moment, I just want everyone on here, our community, feel free to share on behalf of my, on behalf of me. I am here. I want you to know that I am ready and I am willing to do the work to ensure that every student, no matter their gender, race, religion, ethnicity, every student in our district has the opportunity to thrive. We are incredibly fortunate to be a part of a wonderful district, but we must always strive for better. That means fostering a truly inclusive environment where every student feels supported, valued and set up for success. Education is a collective effort. It takes administration, teachers, families and the entire community working together. As a longtime volunteer and youth leader, someone who's deeply engaged in our schools, I know what it means to be fully committed. I don't take on responsibility unless I am ready to give one hundred percent. I will bring the same dedication, passion and accountability to the school board. I am running to represent all students. I am running to represent all families and taxpayers across Lower Merion and Narbuth. I believe in champion public education, advocating for students and leading with a unified voice. We must continue to build bridges, foster community engagement and create a peaceful, inclusive environment where every learner can thrive. and create a peaceful, inclusive environment where every learner can thrive. This isn't just about policy for me, this is personal. I have seen firsthand how investing in young lives transforms our community. And as a candidate for the school board of directors, I want to ensure that we remain fiscally responsible, deeply engaged with our community, and always focused on policies that put our students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have to keep on, Rebecca, you are next.
Um, we are actually all great candidates. I think uh we reside in a great district uh with room, room for improvement, especially in the D E I. We wanna, we wanna make sure, you know, we are a diverse community. Uh, we wanted to keep that diversity uh, you know, alive. Sorry, we'll make sure it's everyone, uh we want to make sure there's equity for for all, um for trans, for LGBT, for blacks, for browns, for yellows, whites, everyone. I'm gonna make sure, you know, we are addressing antisemitism, anti-racism, xenophobia, um excuse me, I'm blanking. Um, just, you know, make sure again, addressing that, you know, he does not belong here. Um, and also focusing on inclusion with reducing the achievement gap. Uh, I think we're doing great works and there's always room for improvement. Um, and I want to see, you know, my daughter's a third grader, so I have time to see if, you know, the policy, the curriculum are doing their job. Uh, I have a little insight, um insight person to show me, you know, what's working, what's not. And then right now, you know, um, there's a little bit concerned with the curriculum with spelling. Now, my daughter uh can't really spell in third grade, which is kind of concerning. Um, so I want to see, you know, the school board does a great job. And um hopefully, beyond board, you know, I know there are other parents who um who have concerns about this as well, uh, you know, I can help, you know, enhance the curriculum that uh we can in- increase uh reading, spelling curriculum in the elementary um level. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jaime?
Yeah, sorry. And the question is, why am I the best candidate?
Why are you a good candidate for the school board in this moment?
Wow, you know, as I've heard everyone speak, uh maybe I'm a good, I I think I'm a good candidate, but I would say in this, in this moment, it's just one of those where it it's someone who is been involved in watching and I think that right now, we're, we need people who are interested and committed to bringing folks together. Um, and this is not a criticism of the current board. I know that a lot of times in those meetings, things get heated very quickly. Um, but you you can just even in the comments, people feel they're not being heard. And I, I want, I don't believe that that's the case. I I do think that the board is hearing. I wish, I hope to bring transparency and help rebuild or or repair the bridge between the board and and the community. Right? And I think I'm a great person to do so because, one, I'm obviously multiracial. Like, people often don't know what what my background is. Live in a multi-religion household with three languages spoken at any different time. Um, and I I think that that's what what we need is someone who is looking or people who are looking to find the best uh in in folks and and make sure that while we don't always have to agree, we're all working towards making this the best school district that we can with the resources we have. Um, I'm I'm excited uh to participate. I'm excited that I'm not even on this forum. Um, and I and I look forward to seeing how uh people's campaigns progress and how these issues we, as they've been raised today, we, how we address them uh going forward. Um, I think we are, you know, I I'm, I'm proud to be a part of this community and I and I hope to to represent um with the folks that are that are doing it and are so committed.
Okay, thank you. Juanita?
So I decided to run because I had so many different emotions running through me. And one of the things that I wanted to do is just be a a positive voice in our community and to advocate for all of our children's needs. And I wanted to respond to a civic responsibility by stepping up. And um very similar to John F. Kennedy. I'm not asking what my community can do for me, but what I can do for my community at this point. And at this point, not only as a member, potential member of the school board, but I really want to bring together um the difficulties that we have in addressing issues. And I think this is the time more than ever that we absolutely need to be more collective. Because our children also hear us. They hear the challenges, they hear the divisiveness. And what we need to project for them as we go through these next years is a place where they could feel um comforted, that they can feel protected, and that they know that we as adults are all working for all of their uh best interests. And we can do that. And I know that I can bring to the table the ability to listen despite um the frustrations that people have. I recognize that oftentimes it seems like anger and the anger is directed towards the board or individuals. But that's frustration. And we had to cut through the frustration in order to do some hard, serious work. So I'm an advocate and I'm a communicator and I'm a hard worker. I T is no joke, trust me.
Okay, thank you. Juanita, Rich?
Is it my turn or Summer's?
Oh, wait a minute.
I'll go.
Oh, my gosh, I left, I left her off in the, in this one. I'm s- oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, Summer, it is your turn. Thank you for people knowing the alphabet.
You should move her to the, there you go.
Thank you. Um, I bring extensive experience in governance, financial oversight, and strategic decision-making. Throughout my career, I've worked with stakeholders at the county and state levels, advised on policy, and served on boards overseeing budgets and long-term planning. I have done extensive research on this role and talked with current board members of this district and neighboring districts, past presidents of this and neighboring districts. As a graduate of the Emerge Program that trains women to run for office, I feel prepared to contribute to serve on the board. I bring experience in strategic planning and implementation. As a school board member, I will advocate for a strategic planning process that is agile, transparent, and built for the future. Because good planning is not just about where we want to go, it's about making sure that we have the right tools and we're measuring our success to be able to get there. I believe also that every student should see themselves represented in what they learn. And just importantly, they should be able to gain a deep understanding of the histories and cultures and perspectives of others. I'm running for representation. And I will also be working with the boards to hold the superintendent and the district, the district leadership accountable for making sure that our schools truly feel inclusive, not just in curriculum, but also in culture. I thrive in collaborative environments, and I believe that teamwork is absolutely essential to effective leadership. Um, a school board functions best when its members work together with a shared commitment to the district's mission. I believe I bring a good balance in my skills, my background. I believe I bring a good balance to the board with my education, civic leadership, my professionalism, and my board governance. As a board member, I will approach every decision with diligence and a commitment to learning and being mindful of our taxpayers. I will ask the right questions and I'll seek inputs from parents and educators and ensure that every policy we implement is focused on success, on student success. And most importantly, I'm committed to transparency and accountability. I want families to know that their concerns will be heard and that every decision will be guided with the best interests of our students. I'll use my uh my chit. Uh, the school board is not just about, is more than just policies. It's about ensuring that every decision we make strengthens our schools and supports our students. And I know that leadership is not about having all the answers, it's about listening, learning, and being collaborative. I'm running because I believe our schools deserve strong, strategic leadership, leaders who collaborate with the district, engage with the community, and advocate at the state level to ensure that our schools remain strong and funded. I would be honored to earn your support. Thank you.
Now it's Rich Lester.
So I might as well use my chits. Um
Okay.
At this moment, why, why am I a good candidate? I'm gonna make a couple of comments on that. So I like to say, I've said this to some committee members when I've talked to them one-on-one. You probably don't want a school board filled with nine Rich Lesters, but having one or two with the type of business background, the board experience is, I think, really useful, especially at this moment. Um, we, Todd Ridkey at the last budget, at the last board meeting or two board meetings ago, talked about some budget potentially problems coming up next year. I've got extensive experience running a business of about half the size of the school district. So I understand how to make trade-offs, how to evaluate financial decisions really thoughtfully. Um, so I think my background and board experience will be really useful. One of the other pieces that I see in this district right now is that there's a lot of angry, loud voices that are being heard. And it's important for the board to come together and to really set an example of collaboration and how to work together and how to engage in civic dialogue. There's been a lot of uncivil behavior um targeted at some of our school board members, two of the incumbents here. And we need to figure out how, as a school board and the community, to change the nature of the conversation. We are not setting a good example for our students. Students model behavior of their parents. And if you see the attacks that have been lodged against Curry and Anna, and people have every right to disagree with their behavior, but they should be doing it in a civil way. And so at this moment, I feel like I'm someone who can bring collaboration, experience working with others, and try to hold people accountable to being civil to each other. We have every right to disagree, but we need to do it in a way that sets an example for our children. Thanks.
Thank you. Um and yes, I'm on the right page. Anna Sharrock?
Thanks, Adrian.
Uh, thank you, Alan.
One second, okay. Um, in my first term on the board, I've had the incredible opportunity to serve alongside a group of dedicated individuals to work productively together. We didn't always agree, but we approached every challenge with a willingness to listen, learn, and engage in thoughtful discourse to find shared solutions for our students. It was through this collective commitment that we were able to move forward longstanding issues, some that had been stalled for decades. Despite significant leadership transitions, including five principal changes in the absence of a consistent superintendent, we were able to open a new school and make meaningful progress for our students. What we've accomplished is nothing short of remarkable, and it's really a testament to our community and the unwavering dedication of our teachers, administrators, and staff who show up every day for our students. This district has been through a lot, and so has our community. At a time when public education is under attack, stability and experienced leadership are more essential than ever. And as a lifelong educator, I bring the ability to truly partner with our community, represent its diverse needs, and ensure best practices guide every decision we make. I know that there have been moments when my frustration has been visible to our community, and that's because I care deeply. Over the past year, it has been challenging to witness actions that work outside the principle of good governance. My previous experience, even when we disagreed, was rooted in respect for our community, where discourse, compromise, and a shared commitment to solutions guided us forward. I remain steadfast that my, in my belief that when we engage with honesty and humility, we can navigate even the toughest issues for the benefit of our students. If Curry and I are not reelected, the entire board, except for one member, will have less than two years of experience. In a time of immense challenge, that loss of institutional knowledge would be felt deeply. Stability in, on the board is not just that, not just valuable. It's vital to continuing the progress we've made while navigating the complexities of public education today. We must continue to balance progress with fiscal responsibility. Ensuring public education remains a beacon of opportunity for all students. Equity, student wellness, and academic achievement must remain our guiding principles. I'm running for reelection because I believe in our community, I believe in our students, and I believe that we can truly achieve the change that we all aspire for if we work together, keeping students at the center of all that we do. Thank you for your consideration and all my panelists for participating tonight. I appreciate you all so much.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and um Carrie? You get the last candidate word.
Great, wonderful. I think that was pretty remarkable in itself. So I just want to be really honest and transparent with everybody. My goals remain clear. We, as an entire unit, and what I will do every single day with my my fellow board members is hold high expectations for every single one of our kids. We will ensure that safety of all the kids is paramount to what we do and everything we do. And it's also really important that we're teaching each generation that a plural democracy is the foundation of who we are. It's the foundation of we, the people. That means we're different, we have different views, and we need to engage with each other in a way that's healthy and respectful. We need to do that as a community of adults, as a community of educators, school leadership, and our kids as well. Bottom line, I am a servant leader. I grew up in Ardmore, my dad's from Ballackinwood. And my, I grew, I went to Ballackinwood Middle School, my dad's from Belmont Hills, my mom was from Ardmore. I've lived in Narborough, I've lived in now Gladwin. I feel like this is my community. My kids were raised here by my neighbors. I'm so grateful for what everybody has done to me. But what I need to do and haven't finished doing yet is ensuring that the stability in the district, as Anna said, is so unbelievably important. Public education is under threat, and having a doctorate in education gives me the ability to understand and know where those threats are coming from and how to use the law. Because when they go low, we're gonna use the law and we're gonna move it forward. So remember, this work needs to continue. My commitment to ensuring that all of our kids have high expectation and are included and belong stays holds true. We need to get a strategic plan done. We need to hold on to our superintendent and give him the space and grace to move forward as a whole community. And we need to do it in a fiscally responsible way for our whole community. Every single member of our community pays those taxes, and it is hard on so many people. Integrity is about when the inside matches your outside, and that is something you will always find with me. I'm proud of the work that I've done. I am so proud of the work that Anna has done, and I really appreciate the endorsement. That, sorry, done, thank you.
All right. Um, I want to thank everybody for for attending. It, it was there were a lot of you that stayed on this whole two hours. It's very impressive. This is a very long forum. And the candidate, I think we've got some really hard decisions in front of us. We've got some really good candidates here. I'm very impressed. Um, and a special thank you to to all of you, because everybody is still just a potential candidate until they get their petitions in and so on and so forth. So I want to thank them for their bravery and the, their informative and thoughtful answers. I hope everybody learned a lot. Uh, candidate contact info will be sent out to everyone who registered. Um, the candidates will have their um their, their um candidate um emails set up, and you'll be getting those. Um, the link to the recording uh will be available later this week. I have to download it and then upload it, and then it takes to, takes a little bit of time. Let's just say that. Um, so I wanted to let everybody know and um how how um everybody, any, anybody can get to, somebody just asked uh who votes for them to be on the ballot? Actually, no. who votes for them to be on the ballot? Actually, nobody votes for them to be on the ballot. It's the candidates who submit their petitions to the, to the Board of Elections. And then if those petitions are in order, they can be on the ballot. There is an endorsement process through, um, DCLMN where we, uh, we vote for who we think will, would be the best candidates. Um, and that endorsement process, if they need, um, I think it's sixty or sixty-five percent of the votes to get an endorsement. And, um, but there's also a chance for us doing recommendations because that happened four years ago. So there isn't, nothing is, nothing is ground in stone at this point. Um, I want you all to reach out to your committee people. I'm going to share my screen in one second. Okay. So make your voice heard. That is, that is what we need. Register to vote by May fifth or apply for a mail-in or absentee ballot at vote.pA.gov. Check out our website. Um, at HTTPS, at, at, um, it's democratslmn.org, okay? And in there, if you click on the about thing, it'll see committee people. And it also is a link to find out who your committee people, person is. If you have a favorite, um, contact your committee person and say, I really like this person. Oh gosh, I would love from people in my area to contact me. And, um, let me know what you thought, um, and why. And let's have a conversation. So, um, this is what's happening. I'm going to, um, say goodbye to everyone and, um, I am saving the chat. And I will forward, I will, I'll forward those questions to all the candidates and they can maybe, uh, reach out and, um, let you know. And you'll have their contact info. So there we are. Everyone have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you, our spotlighter.
Thank you.
Thank you.